Good evening and welcome to the October 12, 2023, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer residents appointed by the city council. Tonight we have five, which is a quorum. The commission advises the city council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, and time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda tonight is significantly slimmer than envisioned. The first item, which was a request for major revision to final site and building plans, has been withdrawn by the applicant. Anything else to add on that?
No, no actions necessary on item one.
Okay. Item number two is a public hearing for final site and building plans for stadium improvements at Kennedy High School. This item has been requested to be continued by the applicant. See if the planning manager has any additional information to add there?
Chair Roman, commissioners, the school district continues to work with staff on various co-compliance issues. So they have requested continuance until the first November meeting.
Okay. Since this item is a public hearing, and in order to comply with requirements for notice periods, I would note that we've been recommended to open the public hearing and then hold open the public hearing until November 2nd. So if there's anyone who may have attended and wants to comment on this, they certainly can. The commission will have not heard any details about the project, but so given that, I would open the public hearing. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I move to hold open the public hearing until the November 2nd Planning Commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we continue on that motion, we do have one person in attendance in the gallery. Were you here for this or the next item?
Yep, from the school district architect.
Okay, so not necessarily to provide public testimony. Okay, thank you. There is no one in the gallery and no one online who is not staff or with the applicant. So any further discussion on holding open the public hearing to November 2nd? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that sufficient for this item?
Yes.
Okay. Item number three is also a request for a final site and building plan for stadium improvements at Jefferson High School. For the same reason as outlined in item number two, this item is recommended for continuance to November 2nd. So as this is a published public hearing, I will open the public hearing. And then I would look for a motion. Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, I move to hold open the public hearing until the date of November 2nd.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to hold open the public hearing on item number three to November 2nd. Any further discussion? Right, seeing no one in the chambers and no one online wishing to speak to this item at this time, I would call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item is continued to November 2nd. Item number four. This might be one of our fastest meetings so far. Item number four is our annual miscellaneous issues ordinance study session. Always a riveting topic, and Planner Rick Byle is here with the presentation. See if there's animation.
Okay, great. Let me just set up my slideshow here. Can I share? Lovely. I could change my last name to be miscellaneous, so I could be miscellaneous. Okay, well, that was great. Am I sharing? Okay. Pardon. So it is the greatest time of year. It is the miscellaneous issues ordinance season. As you all know, this is the time of year where we bundle together a lot of small or minor adjustments to city code that in and of themselves do not merit the work and overhead sort of coordination that is required to create a report and host a hearing and send notices. So we bundle them all together, and this is your class of 2023. So before we get started, I want to talk about the new system that we have implemented here in the Planning Division to help prepare for our miscellaneous issues. We designed this system to allow for more transparency and consistency in how we accept applications to the miscellaneous slate. And we've had some very positive results from this process upgrade. Some of the changes that we made this year is that we created a single way for miscellaneous issues to be added to the criteria. So for all intents and purposes, there is a link that is the staff has that they can put forward any ideas, and all of the ideas go through that one channel. So it's not, we're not getting them from other areas. There's a pass-through that goes through staff. And because of that, we can open the miscellaneous issues for a full, longer period of time. And you'll see that when I present on the timeline of this project. Second, we implemented a continual peer review process for miscellaneous issues. We met at least quarterly as staff to review each of the proposed ordinances, and we ranked each of these ordinances based on pre-established criteria, which I'll talk about more in the next point. But the idea was that this would give us an idea to really make sure that we had a shared understanding for the types of issues that we were talking about, and if we had questions, to inform our prioritization. And then came the prioritization criteria. And basically, what this looked like is each staff ranked each of the proposed ordinances to the extent to which the scope for the proposed criteria, is it considered a miscellaneous issue, basically? So does it require its own public hearing? If it did, then it would not meet the criteria of a miscellaneous issue. Or was it urgent to the point where it couldn't wait to the end of the year to be bundled with the rest? In that case, it wasn't a good fit for the miscellaneous issue. So that helped us to make decisions about what we're bringing to the table at the end of the year. And then we also added some data gathering. We ranked each of the project on difficulty or complexity and urgency and impact. These things did not, they did not add to the prioritization, but they certainly could serve that purpose in the event that we have 500 miscellaneous issues proposals. So that didn't happen this year. We had 18, which is a feasible number that we've had for many, or it's typical of miscellaneous issues to have like that many. So then this, so this gave us some data, and it helped also to understand especially the criteria of impact, to know if any of the issues required a rapid racial equity impact analysis. And so I will share with you any of the miscellaneous issues that scored above a three, so the scale was one to five. If it scored above a three for impact, that was something that we, that I starred, that denotes that the issue may have an elevated level of impact. We have looked at all of the issues and based on the guidelines that was communicated to us by the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. We, at first glance, it's hard to tell, but we didn't see anything that stood out as needing the rapid racial equity analysis. Of course, we are working with our colleagues at OREB in order to make sure that our understanding of that is consistent across all of our departments. But the, I will let you know in case you see something tonight that might require further inquiry. Okay, so let's get started. So this is our timeline. So we are here in October. The legal review on all the ordinance documents is happening, the first glance, and then the study item, and then I will be back next month in order to have the public hearing, and then this will then go to city council at the end of the year. So these are the applicants. This is your class of 2023. Just in summary, the topics that are on the left-hand side of the screen, those are the cleanup items, those are a word change or a reference link, and then the items J through R, and those are on the right-hand side of the screen. Those are the, the things that are slightly more substantive than a quick cleanup item. So we'll just get right into it. I'll quickly go through each of the proposed. So, oop, sorry about that. Okay, so there's a blank subsection that exists because there, when it was originally written, subpoint one and subpoint A were on the same line, and so that created a blank, which is not in the greatest form. So we would like to scooch things up, renumber them, so that that blank does not exist in our city code. Item number two is the type-two home business. In past years, the conditional use permit approval is, actually, you are the decision-maker on that. It's no longer city council. So we need to update city code to reflect the language to match the other part of city code, to reflect the changes. Our revised site width diagram, you may remember this one from last year. We didn't quite get it right. There was a technical, the line should actually be straight across and not curvilinear, and so we need to update it again to record that change. There's an incorrect reference on RS1 and R1A for our single-family dwelling standards. We are just going to update that to match the correct section in code, to match that. For item E, we have two family dwelling side setbacks. They, we, for the purposes of clarity, we felt that it would be easier or more intuitive for a person who's looking at this to also understand that the height standards are in effect. And so the hope with this ordinance change is to put the height below the table, just to, so that is more clear and known for people who are looking at the code. The perimeter fencing and drive-through standards, right now it is the exception fences for screening. All fences are located within the requirements, and then it lists our actual drive-through facilities. So we need to update that code section to actually match the fence standards. So that's a, that's a link update. Okay. Our application processes and fees for an RV permit, the RV permit no longer exists. So we would like to take that out of this table and the table in the appendix. When we went through last year and updated all of the fees to Appendix A, we missed one. So this ordinance is to update the header, I would describe that as a header, as part of subsection C, to point the reader to the Appendix A for information on fees. Temporary borrowings, this one comes from the state statute update, and I'm going to read this one because it's a little, it's a little confusing for me specifically, but the, basically, temporary borrowings, like, was moved to a subsection and is now a different term, and so the subsection, because it was repealed, it can exist in our city code effectively. So we are, in collaboration with Lynn Moore in environmental health, we are removing the reference of temporary borrowings to match state statute, the state statute update. So this would be removed in chapter 15 and then in Appendix A. Accessory rear setback is currently at 30 feet, but for other uses, this is 10 feet. So staff considered this and felt that 10 feet would be appropriate, and, but this is one of those items that did elevate for impact, in that there may be some impact, or it might happen regularly enough that it might be worthy of an analyses of that. Our farmer's market, we have farmer's market listed as a use on our use table, but we don't have a definition of that use in the, in chapter 1903. So we would like to add a definition to match the definition that I believe is currently in use in chapter 14. Okay, so this one, application form, this, the idea behind this ordinance is that we, it is difficult sometimes to get application forms that are signed by the property owner just to have the actual form. So strict adherence to this does cause delays, but another form of owner-written approval, for example, a letter, we feel would suffice for that. So the intent with this proposed ordinance is to update the language so that another form of owner-written approval would be acceptable as part of our application process. Nonconformity triggers for a non-conforming site characteristics, this is another one that has scored on average above a three on our rubric of impact. And the, the idea behind this proposed ordinance is that the, traditionally, we've always thought that the redevelopment of a site of the floor area space of 25% or greater was always thought to be cumulative, but it doesn't say that in code. So the idea for the ordinance or our solution to this issue is to explicitly say that it's cumulative and that the effect would be at the time that this ordinance would pass, say, saying effectively like, this would be, this starts on December 28th or whenever it is published, as part of that process. Okay, the ADU location, so accessory structures are not allowed between the primary structure and the street, but our ADU locations, which is an accessory structure, does not say that. So we would like to add this language for our ADU locations so that they would match the same as any other accessory structure. Displays of merchandise definition, so this relates to like the, like donation bins, or they're generally like services that are provided free of charge where people can drop off donated clothing or a UPS drop box. So this allows us to have some standards to make sure that the placement of those do not impede motor vehicle traffic and that we have spaces for that. So as part of this ordinance change, we are just going to change the definition so that the exterior storage, it isn't necessarily something for sale. That was kind of the issue that was, that was brought to our attention in this process. Fence standards, front and side yard, this is an update that has a higher impact because of the, this change came about because of the single-family, two-family standards changed, and it's something that we didn't notice until after it passed, and because there's no more prevailing setback, the fence standards and front and side yard meant that you could, in some cases, build an eight-foot fence in your front yard. So we want to make sure that we are going to bring this standard back into alignment having passed the updates to the single-family, two-family standards. And so there are some criteria that allow for the fence standards and front yard setback in, and we can talk about that more if you have more questions. And then auto repair, the definition of auto repair is generally, we've considered it to be indoors or inside a building, but the definition of our vehicle repair major and our vehicle repair minor does not explicitly say that. So to make it explicit so that, that we can adhere to that, that standard. And then our window covering requirements in the zoning district HXR are slightly different than they are for other districts. So the idea is to update our window covering requirements so that it matches the other districts. And I think the things that are, that are different is the percentage calculations, total versus per window, and it's just not consistent. So the change would be to make these changes consistent. And so there's no formal action requested at this time, but we're more looking for feedback from you so that we can continue to revise or to answer any questions, or if there's anything that stands out to you that might require a rapid racial equity impact, all of this information is good for us to know. So that's the, the purpose for my being here tonight in my presentation.
Thank you. Nicely done. Are there specific items in this list that folks have feedback on? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question on item E.
Okay.
Which is, so when I read through, so I'm just reading here. Nope, okay, sorry, I misread. My question's been answered.
Okay.
Commissioner McGovern.
I believe it's item L.
Okay.
And where it talks about the applicant. Could that be more than a written approval, like an email? Is that considered written approval?
I believe an email is a form, I'm going to confer with Planning Manager Marker Guard, but I believe that does qualify as a type of written approval.
Yeah, Chair Roman, Commissioner McGovern, that's correct. We could take an email.
Thank you.
Is there anywhere that we otherwise define forms of written approval? Not necessarily here, but in the code specifically, because I think that's a, it's a good question. It's a question many people might have, and if, nothing wrong with the answer you gave, but is there, if there's a place we can point to what the city accepts as written approval? And again, it might not be here, it might just be in somewhere else in the code that says, "The following are accepted types of written approval for the purposes of city business." Just a suggestion.
Yeah, Chair Roman, I think that's a good idea. We can kind of review that with our legal department and see if that exists or if we can add that.
Commissioner Cookton.
Already getting to start on those 2024 miscellaneous issues, Mr. Chair.
This is a study. We have no ti, we have still time to add it this year. Although I didn't get it in the, the one intake.
We'd have to schedule an emergency peer review, but...
Question for you on the, you don't have to go back to it, the item about the boxes up front, does that also include things like literature boxes, newspaper boxes, those types of boxes?
Oh, that's a really good question. Let me take a look at my notes. I don't typically see those outside of the building, so I'm not...
Yeah, I know, you know, it's 2023, we don't see as many as we once did, but, you know, the local newspaper or the, the visitor's guide that you go, you open the little thing and take one, are those, would those be intended to be covered by something like that?
I, Chair Roman, I don't believe that that was the intent when this, this particular policy was written, but that's not to say that we could...
Just something to look at.
See if it...
It should be tucked in there.
Yeah.
So it's two, I didn't write something down. The last item was, sorry. Oh, actually, it was the one before, it was the auto repair indoors. What about, does that, does, if we specify that, which I think it makes sense, what about like a dent repair kind of a business that does minor stuff, and maybe they're busy, and you pull up in their parking lot, and they come out for five minutes and pop a dent out, and the business is, everyone's happy? Would that be prohibited by this language change, potentially?
I would, I will, Chair Roman, I will once again defer to Planning Manager Marker Guard. I believe it would, based on the word of, letter of the code, yes, it would be prohibited, whether or not it would be reported, or whether or not small instances like that would, would, would warrant, you know, environmental health coming out and citing, that I am not entirely sure of.
Yeah. Chair Roman, commissioners, we'd be looking for your guidance on, is that an exception we should add? For example, we have seen, say, after major hailstorms, for example, that companies will set up tents and can effectively do it outdoors. We could add an exception for something like that, if desired.
I don't know about others, but I wouldn't want to prohibit that from happening. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Chair. I also think about windshield repair. That happens at my employment in the parking lot, and I think that's totally acceptable. And I think that's totally acceptable as it's convenient for people that are working to have that work done on their car while they're not using it.
Commissioner McGovern, go ahead.
Reading off of yours, unfortunately, I am having my windshield repaired tomorrow. And they did state that it would have to happen outdoors. However, if it was raining, it would be indoors. So it's definitely an outdoor activity. So.
Good question.
Other items, specific or general feedback? Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, I think it gets a little tricky to write it, to have like exceptions carved out for what could be done outdoors. I, I kind of lean towards just leaving it the way it is. And I don't think anybody's going to complain about stuff that's not bothersome. And so I think I would be comfortable just leaving it the way it is. That way we have the leverage. Okay, so when you set up the circus tent and is doing 30 Kias in there, we have the authority then to go and say, okay, we can't do this. But if somebody's just popping a dent out, nobody's going to complain. So I think, I don't know, maybe that's not the right thing to do, but I think it would be tough to say, okay, we're going to allow hail damage and windshields and scratches no greater than three inches. I, I think that would get very tricky to police that.
I don't disagree with you. I just also don't want us to accidentally prohibit something that we didn't intend to prohibit. That's, that's my main thing. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just reading this minor vehicle repair and I am not seeing windshields unless I am crazy. Window tinting.
There's a lot of stuff.
Window tinting. So maybe just leaving that off.
Dent repair isn't in there either.
Right, so I'm just thinking maybe if we leave off dent repair and those would be the two instances, I think, where we would be.
Well, that's major.
Oh, dent repair.
Hateless dent repair.
Is considered major. Anyways, and it's not a, something we need to solve today, it's just, again, I just don't want us to.
Right.
Accidentally prohibit something.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree. I think that we just need to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing t's, but I also agree with Commissioner Cookton about, doesn't feel like this rises to making it explicit, because I don't think we want people to, to set up businesses who are doing this exclusively.
Anything else? Commissioner Goldsman, I managed to get RVs in front of us one more time in six years. Commissioner Goldsman.
Can we just see the total list again?
Yeah.
Be just helpful to make sure.
Did you get what you needed from us?
Yes, thank you for the feedback.
Wonderful, nice work. All right, item five is Planning Commission Policy and Issue Update, and we will start with the Planning Manager.
Yes, Chair Roman, commissioners, next meeting will be November 2nd. Pretty full agenda, we have the two items continued this evening, so the Kennedy and Jefferson stadiums. We have a privately initiated city code amendment that would add daycares as a conditional use in the C4 zoning district. They're currently a limited use. We have a sign ordinance study item, city code amendment that is publicly initiated to add pawn shops in the B4 zoning district. That's a spinoff from the rezonings that you saw recently on Lyndale. We have a study discussion of electric vehicle infrastructure plan. That's a draft plan. And then the active transportation action plan. It's a pretty full agenda on November 2nd. November 16th, we have four items, the miscellaneous issues ordinance back as a public hearing. The 2024 to 2033 combined capital improvements program, that's our annual review for conformance with the comprehensive plan. We have a proposed rezoning preliminary development plan, final development plan for a approximately 150-unit senior building at 700 American Boulevard West, that's adjacent to the REI store. And then the application that was withdrawn this evening is expected back, 9,200 old cedar, that's for a building expansion at the BP gas station. So that's what we have coming up.
Great, thank you. From a process standpoint, because we have not had any lengthy meetings in a while, and I'm looking at the agenda length for November 2nd, if, if we decide, if, if the meeting starts getting long, we decide to take a break, is that something we do or do we have to post in the agenda that there may be a break at the call of the chair?
Yeah, Chair Roman, I think you can do it on the fly, just call for a five-minute recess or.
Want to make sure that that's an option. Nothing wrong with a long agenda, I just don't want us to be constrained.
I'm not pregnant anymore, but that would have been good.
Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, don't we have something about an 11:00 PM stop time or something to that effect now?
We do, yep. I'm just thinking if we start at six and it gets to be nine o'clock and we, we want 10 minutes to bio break or whatever, I want us to be able to do that.
Can you clarify the 11:00 PM stop time thing?
Mr. Planning.
Yeah, Chair Roman, commissioners, I can pull out our rules of procedure. I'm not positive that is in there, I know it's in the city council's rules, but.
We did adopt.
I think we took it, everybody remembers it, okay. I recall it's at our discretion to keep going if we want to.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. I'll take a nap.
We'll have 10 minutes. Other items for this topic? The general, she's not on the agenda. Okay, and seeing none, we are adjourned until November 2nd. Come well fortified.